All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good morning. I thought to order the Legislative and Policy Development Committee meeting. First order of business is our approval of minutes. One motion.
So.
This is Karen, second.
Thank you. Any changes, Irene? All favor?
Aye.
Our next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding the remote learning guidance. Irene, please, good morning, Irene, will be presented to us.
Good morning, thank you. I do have a few slides that I would like to share with the committee. So if I could have the option to share my screen, that would be helpful. Ajit, okay, thank you. I believe I'm sharing my screen now, so if that is the case. Ajit, can you let me know that this can be seen?
We can see it.
Yes, I can.
Okay, great, thank you so much. So, good morning, everyone. We are sharing our guidance for planning the instructional time for remote learning in a hybrid and full remote model. And this comes to you in response to the board resolution approved on August 11th that was passed and authorizing local and regional boards to shorten that school year. What we are requiring in this guidance is that districts and schools should develop a full school day, which is approximately six and a half hours, including lunch. And we are also providing and requiring that the grade band minimum should be for engaged learning at the elementary level, four and a half hours, and secondary, five hours. We also require that the flex time that happens before that engaged learning time should be intentionally planned, which could include opportunities for checking in, independent work, and collaboration. We are requiring that the length of the public preschool program is sufficient for implementation, and that new instruction is to be delivered by an appropriately certified and permitted and/or authorized educator, and that daily tracking of attendance of all students should be taking place. In this guidance, we're providing some sample schedules to our colleagues. This is an example of what the elementary for grade band three through five could look like, and this guidance is essentially highlighting those strong practices that we believe in to ensure continuity of learning. And you'll notice in this guidance that not only is there the core content, but also opportunities for online engagement, as well as opportunities for telehealth or checking in and checking out and mindfulness with our learners. This is a secondary example that is also included in the guidance. This is specific to middle school. And here you'll notice that we are lifting and elevating the traditions that we see in onsite learning, specifically like advisory or SEL, social emotional learning development and guidance, as well as opportunities for synchronous and asynchronous learning. Within this guidance, we thought it would be helpful, too, to provide like what could the first 20 days of virtual learning look like regardless of location? And we provide three weeks of how to get ready and to ensure continuity of learning. These few pages also culminate the resources that have been shared since March. And you'll notice here in the third column, including those volumes of resources that were shared, links to the CT Learning Hub, links to other resources created by our departments at the agency, including student support services, as well as other curriculum that we have partnered with, such as the social emotional learning curriculum with Ed Advance. We have benchmarked this guidance. These are just a few of the states that we have looked at. But also internally, we have discussed at length as a leadership council, along with the academic team and the turnaround team, that this makes sense for our learners and for our teachers. We've also talked with a number of superintendents, including some teachers and parents that are in focus groups that I chair, to ensure that we're on the right track, that we're providing the right guidance. This also is a culmination of all the communications that we have shared to provide coherence, to include our reopening document, our plan for reimagining Connecticut classrooms, our sensible assessment practices, as well as the work of our DL framework that was done in partnership with CAPS, as well as the Center for Public Research and Columbia University. Some of our next steps, we do want to communicate this to districts. We're going to provide ongoing technical assistance to districts as they plan to phase this work in, providing ongoing professional learning, whether that's delivered virtually, hopefully onsite, and certainly through some of the on-demand resources we're providing for our CT Learning Hub, as well as with our partners, with RUSC Alliance. We will continue to provide progress monitoring and support with all departments at the agency, and continue to provide follow-up resources that are responsive to the needs of all of our districts, our teachers, and our parents. So, thank you for giving me that chance to share with you. I'm going to stop sharing my screen as long as I can find it, and then I will be able to answer any question.
Irene, I have a couple of questions, and then I'll hold you. As we look at these remote learning guidelines, has the agency looked at anything about using these needs requirements, weather based? Has that discussion come out of, like, if we were to have school closures because of a hurricane? No? Would they?
Thank you for that question. Before I answer that question, I just want to make sure that I'm no longer sharing my screen. Stop sharing. Okay, Ajit, am I no longer sharing?
Yeah, you're not sharing, but we seem to have lost the audio in the room, so hang on.
Okay. You had asked. Yes, thank you so much. That if there's the opportunity to use this guidance on weather-related closures?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there has been an ongoing conversation, but what I would like to do first is just ask Jessica Mertel if she could share some of the thinking that's been happening?
Sure, absolutely. This is Jessica. We have a lot of conversations, and we've had actually been asked that question by a number of districts. Obviously, we move to more or less remote options, raises that question for both cold weather and snow weather-related days. We, at this juncture, don't believe in that within the emergency authorization that you the board provided to allow for remote learning, and historically have taken the approach that the statute doesn't permit that. However, since we are aware that this is sort of the direction that we're moving in, we would be interested to hear some thoughts here, and also consider whether it may be something where we would either take legislative or forward action. At least for the cold weather days, we have a little bit of time to globalize people's feelings on this, but we are aware that it's a sort of a logical follow-up question. Certainly, these concepts could be applied to any remote learning day. It just would be a matter of whether it is the legislature or the board authorizes them to be used in that case.
Thank you, Jessica. And Irene, the other one, the question I had is, I'm not sure if any of these plans have anything to do with the restrictions on time? I know it's remote, like, have we given any districts that we would like to see start trying, you know, moving to a full in-house learning? Or are these simply like an open end date as far as remote learning goes?
I apologize. It was kind of difficult to hear the question and to piece it together, so I would have to ask you to repeat it again, I apologize, unless someone can clarify further.
Irene, what I'm asking is, these remote guidelines that we've created, have we given districts a time in which we'd like to see them start transitioning back into a regular school? And maybe Jessica, I don't know if Jessica can answer, is that discussion a curve at all?
Yeah, sorry, Irene, I can try to assist, you're having a little bit of hearing. So, these parameters are intended to provide guidance when they are in remote or hybrid, you know, and when they're at home. So arguably, it could apply at any time. It doesn't set standards for the number of days per day, or the amount of time. And the reason for that is that we know that it's possible that it be given in school or in future, there may be some shifting expectations. So the intent is to give some parameters around what could a school be providing when the students are at home. That aside, the other, within your resolution and within our addendum that provides some structure as to when schools should be going to hybrid or remote settings, there remains the expectation that all schools are in hybrid or in person when the public health data supports that, which is where we are at right now. So this would be applicable at any time that a student is at home, but it's really more about structuring the day as opposed to structuring the number of days at home. Okay.
If I can also, may I add just a little bit to that, Ms. Benham? And I think it looks familiar. We did benchmark of like, what are the instructional hours in a school day that's onsite? And when you add things up at an elementary level, essentially you have about four hours of engaged instructional learning that's taking place, because there's a number of transitions and a number of other blocks of time that are being used for lunch and for recess and for other specials or even assemblies and so on. So this is in line with what a typical school day should, could look like. So, again, we're trying to provide the sense of routines, the sense of tradition, traditional school day, and the guidance of what engaged learning does look like in a hybrid and remote. So transitioning back should not necessarily be very challenging. Again, the guidance should look familiar in the sense that we're saying every day phonics, instruction, and word study should be taking place to ensure phonological awareness, opportunities for reading, for writing, for collaboration, and all of the other core content areas.
Thank you. Committee members, any questions? Malia?
Yeah, so this is Malia. I guess I'm trying to understand how this, in terms of a timing perspective of schools starting, you know, having already started or about to start, how does this sort of couple with the fact that we're already doing this? Does that make sense?
It does, and I just need clarification on what you mean by already doing this, meaning that we're already back in school?
Correct. So what Jessica has mentioned is that this is intended to be, that this would also help in sort of the hybrid model, if I'm understanding right?
Correct.
So, we're already at that point, right? Most schools are already opening with hybrid model, implementing something. So I'm just trying to think about and understand the timing of these recommendations and what folks are already doing. Is it sort of helping to continue to provide the sort of refining and improvement to what may already be on the ground? That's sort of what I'm trying to get at.
No, it's a good question, and we've grappled with that as well, because we understand that districts needed this a long time ago. But again, we wanted to be responsive to the guidance you've provided as a board, the resolution. And I think when some districts look at this, it'll validate the practices that are already in place, certainly. And if not, then I think it helps as an evaluative tool to say, what are we not considering in our hybrid plan and that we should now consider? We know that we're not saying or expecting that upon release, that this is how it has to look tomorrow. However, this is what we need to work toward to ensure continuity of learning, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you.
Any other committee members have questions? Don?
Yeah, this is Don Harris. I'm kind of looking for some more follow-up on your original questionnaire regarding the use of the distance learning in the case of a hurricane, a tornado, or snow, et cetera. And I heard what Jessica said, it's been in discussion. I just want to know, I mean, is it going to be a ongoing discussion? They're sending out a survey to boards to find out what people are thinking, or who's going to come up with an answer, I guess, to that question?
What I can share with you is that this discussion has been going on for a couple of years statewide through the RUSC Alliance. And I think building upon what they had reduced a paper for consideration could be revisited, but I think all of that needs to be brought to the commissioner and the leadership team, the deputy commissioners, and it is an ongoing conversation. So I know that there's been conversation out there, there are some guidance that we can look at. Certainly, this actually helps send us further to that place and to have a stronger conversation with this guidance. I welcome the opportunity, but I also want to follow the proper process and procedure to have this conversation.
So, we, Don, what we do is we break it up to the commissioners and our immediate committees. The only thing that's close to calling that because of the nature of this crazy weather, you know, schools will be looking at closing it over a rain this next week. So, we'll bring that up to the commissioner, Irene, and you, Irene. Any others? Karen?
Yes, this is Karen. What's for the final number in districts in terms of full in-person, hybrid, and full remote?
I currently do not have that information in front of me. I know that that is being watched closely by Ajit, as well as the commissioner and deputy commissioners, so I would have to come back to you with that information or have one of them share that with you.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Thank you, Irene.
Thank you for this opportunity to share our guidance with you. I appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on to our next, Irene, among the agenda, which is what we've looked at for a lot of time. We worked together.
I'm sorry, there was no action required on that?
No.
Okay.
So Charlene, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone. Hello, virtual, hello in the space. Great to see you. And you are accurate that we came before you last and made this kind of a comprehensive look at the comprehensive school counseling framework, and then translated that into a position statement for the board. And normally, our position statements start with this committee, and we get feedback and all that, so it's a whole board. So, but that is a bad job. I'm going to turn it over to John to go ahead and lead the conversation on what he had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlene. And I'm, thanks to the Policy Committee for having us back for this conversation. I'm joined by Kim Tverso, who is our resident school counselor and our expert in this area and who has worked to develop this comprehensive school counseling framework. So just by way of recap, we came to you, I think, in July, where we presented the information that was contained in what I'm calling the update of the Connecticut Comprehensive School Counseling Framework. That framework was, the beginnings of that were developed because of state statutes that was passed to develop a comprehensive school counseling program. So what Kim did with the Connecticut School Counseling Association and many stakeholders, both in K-12 systems and also in higher education systems, is to develop a framework based largely upon the National Association of School Counselors. There are a myriad of standards in there, there are a number of action items and work that school counselors do that are outlined in the framework, and how all of that work is integrated into other support services personnel, integrated into the school and district mission and vision, their plan for a portrait of a graduate. All of that work is part of what the school counselors orchestrate on that level. So, that document, as you know from the last time we met, is over 100 pages. But what it does is essentially pulls school counseling out of an era where they were focused on just a few kids, you know, either with significant issues or with the kids who are going to college. So what this does is now, it's a comprehensive look at every student in the building and how school counseling can support all of the work that's happening in the school building around academic support, current academic supports for students, around social emotional learning, around preparedness and transition into post-secondary education, and of course, career readiness. So all of that to say, we talked about that back in July, and so based on our conversation with you all, we have developed the position statement on behalf of the board. And there are sort of two components to that position statement. There's the board announcement or position and commitment to comprehensive school counseling and the importance of school counseling as part of an interdisciplinary team on the district level to support students in those four areas that I outlined. And then the second part of the position statement is really a call to action and guidelines for policymakers. So there's specific actions for school building administrators, for district administrators, for school counselors, for other support personnel, how teachers are engaged in that work. There's also a call to action for students and their commitment to their lifelong education and working toward being, you know, critical members of society. There are also guidelines for community members and parents. And so as you can see, we call it a comprehensive school counseling framework because it includes everyone who could possibly be involved in a child's academic development and post-secondary life. So with that, we are presenting the position statement for the board, for you all to consider to go forward with the board. We believe that the adoption of the comprehensive school counseling framework is fantastic, and we will plan on getting that out to districts once the board approves a position statement. But we also wanted, with your guidance, you know, we took this back and said, this is an excellent opportunity to elevate the critical nature of school counseling on the district level, to not just approve the framework and the guide for implementation of the framework on the district and school level, but for the board to be able to say, we believe this is a critical component, especially now, the components of social emotional learning and student mental and behavioral health are certainly critical to all of those things that are happening in the school building and their post-secondary life. So we appreciate the opportunity for the consideration of a position statement in this area. And then at this point, I think I'll pause and turn it over to you, and certainly Kim is available to talk about any of the specific details of the work and of the school counseling framework. Thank you.
Wait, any members have any questions on the position statement? Over to John, yeah?
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. I think it's very comprehensive, and I applaud the work that you've done, put together this framework, so. Bravo.
Thank you very much. It's all Kim and her team, and a lot of stakeholders from the outside.
Thank you.
And John, you were just down, and John, you made a very good point. We need it now more than ever, so thank you, your team as well. I do need a motion that Kim presented. Oh, sorry, Malia?
Yeah, I don't have a question either. I also wanted to provide kudos to putting this together. And I have to say that as I read through it, I was thinking more about how it can be communicated out directly to families, because I almost look at it from a parent perspective as a, this is your right to know about what we're doing to help, you know, your child be successful as a whole child and not just academically. So just something to, I think, for us to think about in terms of sort of a parent or family or guardian's right to know and what the different responsibilities for folks are to, and themselves, in supporting those children.
Irene, now, yeah, Charlene? No, I was just going to add, and thank Malia for that question. We're continuing to charge the conversation about all these documents that we are developing, great documents, but I share your point about making sure that all stakeholders, including families, can know that it's there and know how to ask, and frankly, how to utilize it for their efforts. Because that's an ongoing conversation with us in terms of how do we get all this information out, and it's true about our house, where we have resources for families, but how do we get that information out? So just knowing the context, we have a lot of stakeholders and multiple groups that we're working with, and also cultivating a stronger connection to different organizations that are touch point with families. Those, you know, organizations that are cultural workers, to also different communities and families. And so your thoughts as we continue to work back through, we appreciate.
I've been thinking that, too, and I think more than ever, we have so many families that are going on district websites to get the information maybe, and for our plan, for example, that was a, you know, that was an ask from the department, to make sure your plan is accessible enough for our parents to see. So to have something like a framework like this to incentivize on, you know, to secure the guidelines, some of them do that, and districts, they'll do it, but the same for the state department, this should be what we can show on our initiative. Because they are.
I think we lost the audio again from the room.
Yes, we did.
Aaron, if you can hear us, we lost the audio from the room.
John, they won't be able to hear.
Okay. Are we lost both ways?
Okay, do we need a motion to, if there's no more questions?
Can I motion from the committee? Sir, I just wanted to weigh in, you onto the conversation that was just happening about resources. Is it possible or appropriate within the position statement or otherwise? Whether it's, you know, saying something specifically about funding or at least getting or at least getting at responsibility of districts or states to ensure that resources are available at levels that can support this, you know, what, what is outlined here, right? I think Karen's point is a, is an important one, not dropped, but just trying to think of what is. And with all of the, the action here, I didn't know, you may have addressed that, and I just didn't hear or catch it.
Yeah, and perhaps we feel that, that we don't have the authority to put that in our position statement as a responsibility. That's what I would be looking for, is responsibility of the state appropriators, the legislative branch to fund this.
Okay.
And, and if we don't feel like we have the ability to put that in as a actual section responsibility of the state legislature, I'd like some mention in, in the policy statement that, that highlights that as a need. All right, we can't, we, we can't, in, in my opinion, we can't issue position statements that, that lay out such an amazingly comprehensive and right approach to school counseling without also recognizing that there is a, that there are resources needed to, to, to do that. Where districts would already be jumping up in this, I mean, this is what folks want to be taking.
So it's, it's an interesting balance, because in some cases, there, there could be resources that could be leveraged to support the work in, in terms of priorities, that may be, I know for that it would be several resources that we have that tend to be, but then clearly, and just like every year, Eric, that there's a legislative proposal to fund more school counseling, that in this, in this past session, there was, well, and then when we calculate, they usually provide ratios, and then we calculate how much people pass, and usually that's go much further than that. And I know that there are probably proposals that can come forward again. So I think what I hear is that, I think we recognize the need for resource in the effort. And I think there's a way for us to do that, probably not, I don't think we typically say, here, you know, the legislative law funding a position statement, but sometimes we hear that, and I can't do anything because I don't have the, the, you know, the, the resource to do it. But I think there's a balance there, but, but still, I think there's a way for us to go in here and try and talk about the resource that's served, you know. So when you see it come back next year, we'll, we'll call that out to you. So we'll work on that, John, when it comes to the full, when it comes to the full board. Yeah, we'll make sure that we, we do that instead of, just move back to the right place.
Oh, I would move this, this item with the understanding that some additional language is going to be experienced around, around resources. Right, this is Karen, I'll, I'll make that up.
And Karen, that will be done all, this committee is there, if I can direct the issue, present the statement to the full board, and then this discussion occurs with the full board, again. So that would be the time that we could, and one thing I'm thinking of, sorry, but what will come down, was a meeting with legislators of the education committee. But this certainly would be a very good one, but it's a priority that we want them to look at and understand that we're taking.
This is Bonnie, I'll second it.
All in favor of that? Close?
Aye.
And Charlene, when will this be going to the full board next time?
Uh, this month.
Okay, so next month will be this professional conference that has a full board meeting. All right, please just clarify for the record, was that a unanimous aye? Did anyone vote in opposition? No. Everyone here was, and Woody's in the top. But you feel a lot of them are right. Uh, Charlene, here's the next item as well. This item is, as the committee members, we, we visited in March, and this is an update on the firearm safety.
That's right. And I'm, considering I've come over to the toilet, John, again, so welcome to that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Charlene. So yes, thank you, Erin, yes, we had this conversation back in March before, essentially before the world changed. We have developed this firearm safety guide for schools in response to legislation that came out in 2019, asking us to do so. We have worked with the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, the, and also the Division of Homeland Security, which also includes the school safety component. The Homeland Security Division actually receives the, the school safety plans from districts directly. Those don't come to the Department of Education, they go there. We worked with the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association, we worked with the Police Academy Training Officers Academy that actually provides firearms training. So, and, and we've also worked with the Children's Safety Network and other folks who do a lot of work around advocacy for, for firearm safety. So just as a refresher, what this, what this is not, is it's not part of a school safety plan necessarily. It's not, it does not address and is not intended to address lockdown drills or crisis response drills or what to do in the case of a crisis involving a firearm in the, in the school building or on school grounds. This is specific to, and, and in large part, reaction to the accidental shooting that happened to a student down, down in Guilford back in 2018. So this is really to, to give some guidance to districts and resources to districts so that they can develop either classroom curriculum or informational materials to provide to students to understand as is developmentally appropriate for specific, specific guidance for elementary students versus middle school students versus high school students about what to do in the presence of firearms. And what to do, and, and some understanding, you know, for the upper grades, and really some understanding about discussions around firearms in general in society, where there are uses that are occurring that are, that are legal for hunting. And, and based on our last conversation, we, we added information about rifle clubs and target shooting and things like that. That was a recommendation from this group, to understand the, sort of both sides of the conversation. So that high school students and, and middle school students, as is developmentally appropriate, can have conversations around the national discussion around firearm safety and firearm ownership. So there are hundreds of pages of resources outlining laws and, and constitutional protections around firearms. There is a lot of information around sample curriculums for different grade bands, a lot of conversation about the history of firearm legislation and firearm safety, and a lot of information around firearm safety. So with that, we'd, we'd like to, you know, and, and in this context, we know that a lot of kids are spending a lot of time at home. And as things start to open up, they'll be, again, spending a lot of time at different homes and in different scenarios. And we'd like to be able to move this in front of the board next month so that we can get this, get this out to districts so they can start developing some curriculum and working with their school resource officers to, to provide some, some guidance around firearm safety, both, you know, for all schools. So thank you for that. I'm joined by Scott Nougas, who is our school safety expert here at the department, who was instrumental in putting all of this together. So he's here to answer some questions as well. And with that, I'll pause and turn it back over. Thank you.
Any others? Any questions? This is another statement that we, they brought up to move the full board.
A question. John, just so I'm clear, you're suggesting that these guidelines, and it's going to be up in the school districts, how they present them, where they present them, you know, being in a course or in a handout that goes home to the parents, because it's not really associated with anything within the school. If they see something out there, if they see something, do something, sort of mentality, am I correct?
Yes, that, that's correct. So, so it can, it can be, I mean, we're envisioning that this is part, becomes part of the, you know, under Connecticut General Statute 10 to 16B, health and safety has a number of components that this could fall under. So in, as part of that, the health requirement, this could be part of the conversation. We're hoping that there are, and we're, and in, and in correspondence with districts, as we get this out, we're going to include some conversation that they, they have some community forums and some community conversations with parents and community members, bring in law enforcement, bring in other folks from the community to have conversations with parents and other stakeholders and community members around, around this issue, right? So it's a great question, thank you.
Very good. Very important.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote? That's it, the votes will go to the board next time. Thank you, John, thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And Jessica, opposite, we have about two minutes left. You wanted to address, you or Karen wanted to address your, your question, Karen? Or are we only waiting for the full board?
Oh, I, I had just wanted to raise, Bob, Woody and I had been able to participate in the offering around equity called LEAP, and, you know, out of that, just had been doing some thinking and research on that equity policy. Thank you, Erin had sent those out with a prior, prior meeting, and she said previous statements. And then in digging around a little bit, I also saw the statement on equity educators from 2015 and the most recent five-year plan, both of which are steeped in equity language. And I thought it would be helpful for me as a new board member, but also I thought it could be useful work with the committee to see those are policy statements that have put out, plans that have been put out, and to be able to track, you know, one from 2015, one is the five-year plan through 2021, to track our progress against that. And to use this, some committee time to hear how we're moving for those benchmarks and position us as we, our time to start working on a new five-year plan would be a good way. So I, I thought it'd be a helpful way to integrate the equity conversation, see where we are, and help chart our, our way forward.
And speaking of, this is Erin, speaking of, speaking of Jessica, you said, we let Adrian present those of the past week. And I was looking at the work on a new statement of perhaps merging a whole thing, things together. Remember, we had like three documents that we felt we didn't really need three documents?
Yeah, yeah, this is Jessica, we're all, thank you for bringing that up. You know, we've talked about certainly, any of that hard reason in committee. Today, we had a little bit of a packed agenda, like packed items, but I will mobilize our team to provide some additional information and update at our next meeting.
And I will bring up the five-year plan process, Karen, in my report to the full board today. Because we do really need to start rolling on that. Anything else from the committee? Motion, Jessica? Thank you, good to see you all here.
Thank you.
Thank you.